Welcome all to the Monday, July twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom and broadcast live and recorded on ECA. To use Zoom, you will need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application and enter the webinar ID. While conducting a remote meeting, we'll endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, the use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio, public participants invited to speak by the chair will also be on video or audio. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. All votes will be by roll call. For public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function found under participants from Zoom or to make a request with the Q and A function. The Chair reserves the right to designate a specific point of the hearing at which testimony may be offered, the duration of the comment period afforded to each individual and the number of individuals permitted to speak. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held and off topic commentary or indecent behavior will not be tolerated. But all business indicated on the agenda has been completed. The members will vote to adjourn, signaling the end of the meeting. For to get the meeting going tonight, I will do a roll call. Starting with Wolf.
President.
Weeks.
You're muted.
Sorry, here.
Okay, Tedham.
Here.
Kid.
Present.
Ziggman.
Here.
And Stetson is here as well. All right, let's pick things off with the site plan review for four eighty-two Foundry Street. Desert de Oro Foods, Inc.
And. So we have Bob Ballinger and Nicole Duquette and if there's anyone else from the applicant side who I should promote, if you can raise your hand. And Mark Raymond should be joining us momentarily.
Great, to the applicant group, when you guys are set, please just introduce yourselves and you know, the floor will be yours.
I'm Mark Raymond. I am the Director of Construction with Desert Oro Foods.
Nicole Duquette, if you can hear me, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Nicole Duquette with GPI, a civil, as a site engineer for the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Robert Ballinger, Greenman Peterson, traffic engineer for the project.
Welcome to all of you. Do you guys have a presentation you'd like to take us through? And if so, please feel free to share your screen and again, the floor is yours.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Let me just, I'm not used to Zoom, I'm used to Teams, so bear with me when I do I have permission to share my screen, Stephanie?
Yes, there should be a little green.
The green box, okay. Wonderful, thank you very much. All right. Okay, excellent, so. Again, my name for the record is Nicole Duquette from Greenman Peterson, or GPI for short, it's easier in the minutes. We're here representing Desert, Desert de Oro Foods for a proposed Taco Bell restaurant at the corner of Foundry Street and Bay Road. So just to bring you through the existing conditions on this site. The site is at the corner of Foundry, this is Foundry, this is Bay Road. The site consists of two lots, one at four eighty-two Foundry Street, which is a a residential house that is vacant, currently vacant and is in disrepair. And then three ninety Bay Road, which did have a building on it formally, but is now vacant. We are surrounded by townhouse, residential townhouse development to the east and around to the north, we have various commercial developments such as gas stations, retail, fast food restaurants similar to the site and to the south, there is a residential neighborhood. So what we're proposing to do is proposing to merge the two lots and construct a two thousand one hundred and fifty-three square foot Taco Bell restaurant with a drive-through in twenty seats. So the drive-through will consist of a mobile pickup lane, which is the interior lane and an exterior traditional drive-through lane. So this is for your mobile pickup orders, you order ahead, you can tell them you're you're here, they'll have your order ready and you can slip through here. And then you have your traditional drive-through where you order at the drive-through window and order post here. As far as the parking, we do have twenty, we have twenty seats, so we have thirteen parking spaces. And we did show more to begin with and at the recommendations of staff, we we really condensed it down to what is really needed on this for pavement to try to increase the open space and green space on this lot and decrease the amount of pavement. So one of the things that's unique to the site is that we've angled the parking to to help with the flow through the lot and to reduce the amount of pavement that was on this site. So we have a significant amount of green space around the building and around the site itself. As far as access goes, we have a full access off of Bay Road and then a right-in, right-on, right-in, right-out only on Foundry Street. That was again, a recommendation from the town staff that we limit this driveway, so we have done that. So you'll see that there is a pork chop island that that kind of directs the the flow for right-in, right-out here. As far as the the pedestrian circulation, we are providing pedestrian circulation from the building to the sidewalk along along Foundry Street here. So we'll have a sidewalk connection around the building and down through to connect to these existing sidewalk along Foundry Street. And then that continues up Bay Road. As far as stormwater goes, our treatment system consists of deep sump catch basins with oil-water separator hoods and a treatment unit called the First Defense, it's a hydrodynamic separator. So we're using that to separate our oils, our floatables and our sediment. And then from there, the stormwater runoff would go into an underground detention system, which is underneath the parking lot. So that will slow down the water so that we can slowly discharge it to an infiltration basin towards the front of the property. So this allows us to provide groundwater recharge on this lot as well. The utilities, all of our utility connections are coming from Bay Road so that we're avoiding trenching within Foundry Street because we understand that Foundry Street has has more traffic. So all of our trenching will go on Bay Road. We do need new water service connection and gas service connection, so those will come from Bay Road. But we do have an existing sewer stub that we plan on using, so we will not need a trench for that. So that sewer stub exists right here, we'll connect it. And we have a proposed grease trap for kitchen waste as well to separate our kitchen greases from the sewer as required. Landscaping. This is probably one of the only times I've told my, our landscape architect to go crazy on a site, so he's definitely done that. He proposed a long, so this infiltration basin will have at the bottom, they'll plug it with Joe Pie weed, Black Eyed Susans and Little Blue Stems, so that's just at the bottom of the basin. And then around the perimeter of the basin is proposed native species such as dogwood, summer sweet, winter berry around the perimeter. With addition to the the trees that are around the property, we are proposing various tree species so that I know we've been dealing with a lot of, you know, boring beetles and stuff like that. So we really try to diversify our tree species on a lot so that not all are wiped out if we have something, a dramatic species beetle or disease that comes into the area. So diversification of the trees include honey locusts, which are these trees here with the jagged edges. And then these ones here are maples. And then the ones with the X's are are Hawthorn. And then around here, this dark green, those are red cedar trees around the dumpster and along this side. The other thing we're doing is is planting the inside and those are again native species with dogwood, potent, tantilla, nine bark, daylilies, as far as perennials go and some ornamental grasses. The other thing that we're doing is we understand that there's residential neighbors around us. So we did propose a solid stockade fence, six-foot-high stockade fence along the southern, sorry, this is the yeah, the southern property line, which was requested that within the ZVA as well. So just a, you probably already heard this, that we did go before the ZVA for a special permit and that special permit was granted in July, on July ninth. So for the drive-through, so we do have rights to have the drive-through on this, which was the only relief or or conditional approval that we we needed for the use from the ZVA. We are not requesting any waivers for the site plan. We meet all of the Eastern standards and have tried our best to make it so that this this was a very green-looking lot within within the area. If you have any questions, we do have our traffic engineer, Bob Ballinger or Robert Ballinger here, he can answer any traffic questions. And Mark Raymond is here on behalf of Desert de Oro Foods as well, that he can answer any logistics questions about the use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I mean, I guess some of the feedback that we heard the last time we saw this project, which was in advance of your application for the special permit to the ZVA. You know, we were hearing some feedback on traffic issues and whether or not there would be backup, you know, based on the kind of the proximity of the the drive-through lane to, I mean, I guess it would be primarily Bay Road where the backup, I guess, could conceivably happen. But in general, I guess this question is for Mr. Ballinger. I'd love for you to talk about, you know, your traffic findings and whether or not strike that, how how you would analyze whether or not there would be any backup onto onto Bay Road from the kind of from the queue lane, if you will.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, thank you. Again, just for the record, Robert Ballinger, Greenman Peterson. Mr. Chair, if you may indulge me just briefly, you and other board members may be aware of this, but I did just want to give a very brief chronology sort of how we got here and then I will try to attempt to answer your your question with as much specificity as I can. Our office conducted a full traffic impact and access study published in April of two thousand and twenty-four. As we were going through the zoning board process, zoning board wanted to have that reviewed by an independent outside engineer. We did receive initial comments from the BSC group in a letter dated June third, two thousand and twenty-four. We responded to their initial comments in our letter dated June twelfth. And then the last formal communication from BSC was in a in an email, pardon me, dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four to Stephanie Danielson, which basically sort of accepted our responses to their their comments. So we had some good back and forth with BSC. We believe that that all the technical issues have have been resolved. So again, that was just a brief chronology, my apologies, I didn't mean to take up too much time, but just for the benefit of the board members, if they weren't aware of the full chronology there. With your specific question regarding drive-through, we believe that there is adequate storage capacity here provided. Obviously, you can handle more cars than are actually depicted in Nicole's plan. And based on similar facilities, this type of use, we believe that there is adequate storage here, so we are not concerned about queue overflow or spillback onto the public way, specifically specifically Bay Road. This is a fairly typical and common layout for a modern Taco Bell facility. And we believe that the storage that is provided can adequately accommodate that 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 expected queue or or stack. And that was actually one of the questions I believe that we went back and forth with with BSC. They basically acknowledged that there's sufficient storage with within sight to accommodate that anticipated queue.
By how much? I mean, it, you know, it looks to me, I mean, I'm just looking at it, looks like you could probably get, I don't know, fif- fifteen-ish kind of cars in that queue before you would start to spill onto Bay Road. You know, what's the typical, what's the typical queue line look like in in one of these Taco Bells? You know, I guess during that five to seven PM where you'd likely see, I assume, most of your traffic.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. I think typically ten to twelve is is what you would expect. Obviously, what you see before you is becoming, you know, kind of more common, kind of the the new industry standard for for many quick-service restaurants ever since the pandemic, where you're able to accommodate that mobile order ordering lane as well. You know, folks, folks love to use the the app on their phone. And and I'm not trying to 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 bring in others, but Nicole or or Mark specifically, I don't know if you have any other operational details. But but in our professional experience, after working on a number of these sites over the years, you know, we we again, I guess I'll sort of fall back to, we we feel what's provided here for storage is is certainly adequate, given the anticipated demand.
So just to clarify again, thank you, Mark Raymond with Desert Oro Foods. The brand standard is typically to be able to fit seven and nine cars in the stack. We have depicted here thirteen. Reality is, we're never going to have more than six to eight live orders. What I mean by that is somebody pulling into that exterior lane to place a food order. We found a lot of our sales actually, specifically between that five and eight PM range, is coming more third-party as well as the mobile app. So people, what's happening is people are placing their orders and they're hitting a geo-fence, which then triggers the store within, I believe it's one mile. When they get within one mile, the store triggers, the order is ready, they would come in, they would pull into that interior lane. They would say, hi, my name is Mark, I'm here to pick up my order. They would say, pull to window one or window two. That car would then exit that speaker post and go right to the window, get their order and be gone. The average turnaround time for that is less than a hundred and twenty seconds. The total order requirement time, if you were to pull into the speaker today and if you pulled to a speaker and placed the order live on property, is three minutes and ten seconds to turn the car from the time you place your order to the time you're driving away. Typically, we have, on average, again, no more than seven to eight cars in the lane, in the queue total. That mobile lane really has identified, you know, the need. The other point of note with that is, even though the interior lane is strictly mobile and digital, in the event we find that that lane on the exterior where people are pulling up to order, we can turn on, there's a function just to convert over, where you can actually place orders at both lanes. So you can actually use both lanes as dual-use if needed to restrict any concerns you'd have about the backup going out. And operationally, operationally, that benefits them as well too, because most of their metrics are based on how quick they are.
That's great. Thank you for the responses. Board members, any other questions?
Just one quick question.
Yes, I I I have a question. You first, yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna ask how deep the catch basin is in the front of the property.
I was going to ask a question about traffic, so.
So we typically do four-foot sumps, so it's varying how deep that four feet, you know, our distance inverters in the four feet, is there a specific one that you were questioning about?
No, I I was just trying to determine if there was a protective fence around it and how deep it was to prevent, you know, any pedestrian.
The infiltration basin, not the catch basin, okay, all right, sorry, I misheard. So this is four feet, or actually three and a half feet deep, however, this is this is a dry basin, it's not full of water, so you don't have to worry about ponding in there.
Okay, so no, no hazard if somebody were to fall in or slide down the slope.
Right, and that's part of the reason why we put the the bushes around it to deter anybody from going in there and it will be planted at the bottom too. So if someone does fall in there, it's not, nothing's going to happen because the bottom's going to be dry.
Thank you.
Can I ask my traffic question?
Please, the floor is yours.
Yeah, the the question I have is the contribution of the traffic that this additional traffic we don't have today to both Bay Road and Foundry Street, the additional cars. I I read the report and it wasn't clear is determined the numbers of cars for unit of time that are expected to go out. Can you explain how that affects the current traffic in Foundry and Bay Road?
Certainly, thank you for your question. What we do is is typically for analysis periods, we look at kind of the the worst-case scenarios where site traffic is is coinciding with the highest adjacent street volume. So by that, I mean specifically, we look at the the AM commuter period, the PM commuter period and also the the Saturday midday time, when you know, most most folks tend to be out and about, you know, running their 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 weekend errands. And what we had determined, based on standard rates and equations published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, is that a site of this size typically will generate about ninety-six total trips during the the AM peak hour. That's the total of in and out, seventy-two trips during the weekday PM peak hour and a hundred and nineteen trips during the Saturday midday peak hour. What's important to note about a site like this is that those are not all new trips to the area. A site like this, or if you think of other sort of commercial retail entities like a gas station, for example, they tend to rely heavily on pass-by trips. So in other words, vehicles that are already on the adjacent street network, Bay Road or Foundry Street, that, you know, sort of on impulse, decide to stop at this establishment. What the published data indicates is that approximately half of all the vehicle trips associated with a site like this are of those pass-by variety. So when you're actually talking about new trips to the study area, the numbers I cited before are actually diminished substantially. Those would be reduced down to about forty-eight vehicle trips during the AM peak hour, thirty-two during the PM peak hour and fifty-nine during the Saturday midday peak hour period. So in terms of relative impact at the signalized intersection of Bay at Foundry, you're talking about a relatively minor impact. And just to to reference staff report, comment number fourteen, I'm paraphrasing slightly, but the last sentence reads, "BSC Group, the peer reviewer, found that the project will not have a significant impact on the existing traffic flow in the subject area." And I I I hope I was able to answer your question, but I'd certainly be able to provide any follow-up information, sir.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I think I wanted to make sure that I understood the report.
Thank you for your question.
I probably should have done this first, so sorry, sorry, Mickey, I will make sure you get your questions, but I probably should have asked Stephanie if she had some thoughts before I jumped right into the board members and my own questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll make I'll make it quick because I think they've mostly been covered, but as Nicole and Bob had mentioned, we did have a meeting, a design review team meeting ahead of time. Concerns over the in and out were addressed. In addition, BSC, as part of their review, wanted to see the ingress and egress on Foundry Street to be tightened up such that it wouldn't be possible for a vehicle to take a left-hand turn into or a left-hand turn out of the site. And they they have addressed that. They talked about the buffer and the stockade fence along the residential property to the south. There is a vegetated buffer along the Easterly property bound, which also abuts residential. And my question there would be, and I didn't have this in my report, couldn't they extend the fence along there too, just again, to provide that buffer to the neighbors? The bylaw calls, if you're doing a vegetated buffer, for it to be densely vegetated. And I wouldn't call this a densely vegetated buffer. The landscaping that's been provided really reflects comments that I made about softening the view from the street, so we appreciate that. The crosswalk that or the crossing from the sidewalk to the building, there is a stop sign for vehicles after the crosswalk. And I feel that there should be some kind of signage, maybe just a little bit ahead of the red vehicle that you show here, indicating that there is a pedestrian crossing up ahead and to proceed with caution to make sure someone doesn't collide with a pedestrian. My question about whether mobile app users are simply driving through to pick up through using their phones or if they've already pre-ordered was answered. And the lights, they did provide a photometric plan that showed that there would be de minimis casting of light off property. They did not show the fixtures and I want to make sure everyone knows that on the applicant side that these fixtures should be downward casting and dark sky friendly and that those details should be provided. The stormwater management system is being reviewed by Beta Group, peer-reviewed. So we don't have their response tonight. And then the Board of Appeals did impose some conditions as part of their special permit. And I thought that the board might want to consider incorporating the same conditions in the, any decision that the planning board issues if they're so disposed or predisposed. And on the plant material, they really should be true native species if possible. If possible.
And just so we, just so we're we all have them, what are the conditions of the ZBA special permit?
So the hours of operation are limited to eight AM to twelve AM. Trash pickup is to be done between the hours of eight thirty AM to eleven thirty AM. All deliveries shall be between eight thirty AM and eleven thirty AM. There'll be sound dampening fencing um installed between the drive-through order window and the southern property line. And all exterior lighting shall be shaded and directed to, um I miswrote that, it should be cast, not cost onto the subject property. No interior lighting shall be admitted in a manner that causes lice light to cast onto a budding property.
Thank you for that, and uh Mickey, I know you had some questions.
Um I just have one question and it's kind of the same question I'd asked before, I just didn't see it answered um when I read through the traffic study. Was there a count of how many cars were turning off um Depot left onto Foundry going east during any of those times? Cause um m- my concern once again in having driven that area a lot, there are no green signals, turns, there are no green arrows to turn left, um particularly coming off Depot onto Foundry, which is a pretty busy turn. You gotta bang a left, uh there's no other way about it. Um um that is my only kind of concern with all of this is just uh uh car safety and pedestrian safety as people are trying to turn into the lot if they're kind of backed up on the road waiting for someone and a car bangs the left really quick and kind of um has to has to jam on the brakes really suddenly for that or for a pedestrian.
Um it it thank you, I'm I'm sorry, w- would you, would you be able um to repeat the first part of that? I just wanna make sure I I I try to answer you as accurately as possible, I just wanna make sure I understood it completely.
Oh, for sure. Um so um when you're coming into the intersection, coming off of Depot, turning left onto Foundry going east. So you'd be turning um uh I'm gonna point to the zoom like it meant anything to anybody else.
May I make a suggestion? Mickey, I think if you go up to the top to view options, you should be able thought you could um like draw.
Oh hey, there we go. Okay, so let's see if I can do this, first time in in public, no less, this will be fun. Um coming, can you see the green light? That I'm doing?
No, oh, actually, there it is, I'm sorry.
Alright, so you're coming um driving this way and you gotta turn left. Uh wait, do I have that right? So there is no green, there is no green arrow, you just have to wait and you just have to hold your breath and then you have to cross your fingers and go. Um and it's uh particularly at peak times, it's it's, there's a lot of traffic back up there because the cars either have to kind of scoot around you, which is not the greatest thing in the world, technically possibly illegal, but I mean, people do it all the time, etc. Um oh, I'm sorry, by the way, I meant to do it on this side of the road because obviously we're not driving on the wrong side of the road. Um so with all of that, uh cars turning left, like was there a count of how many cars turning? That's where my concern is, like the traffic back up there.
Um yes, we we did do uh all new traffic counts, peak hour, so so we we did stratify the the quantity of left through right on on every single approach. One thing that we we did find is that a- again, our our overall impact was relatively minor in terms of operation of of the entire intersection. Um this discussion came up a little bit um uh uh through the zoning process as well. Um we did run and analyze like sort of a mitigated scenario with some minor signal timing adjustments. Um and my my memory serves, um you know, there was some commitment to continue to work with with Public Works. Uh if if they felt that any of those changes needed to actually be implemented. Um BSC group in their in their independent peer review did not specifically demand that, but I I think I think I I I speak for the team here i- in the sense we're we're obviously willing to continue to to work with Public Works Engineering specifically. Um you know, if there's some minor modifications that that could be made. Uh but again, I I I think that the level of mitigation is typically tied to the level of impact. And and I think again, not to not to regurgitate, you know, my prior testimony. Um but I I I think both my 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 testimony and the te- the written words of BSC would indicate. Again, the project is not gonna have an uh significant impact on it um existing or prevailing operations. So um I I I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm trying to answer that as specifically as I can, and I I do, I do appreciate and understand your question. Um but the the permitted left turn phasing that that you're speaking of, or you don't have the dedicated arrow is is sort of a uh a quite a common signal phasing um um depiction that that you see in a lot of public highways. Um so uh we again, we we would sort of stand by the fact that our relative impacts to the intersection is 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 not significant.
Okay, and and thank you, and to be fair, like this has existed before your proposed restaurant beer, this has been an issue for quite a while, I just wanna make sure that kind of it was on the record about that.
Certainly, thank you.
Well, actu- actually, I mean, I kind of have a follow-up there too, I mean, it i- did you, do you have a sense uh Mister Ballinger as to how many I guess how many additional left-hand turns you're gonna get there because of the existence of that right-only inn? In other words, I imagine when when you were designing this, that the the right turn only end is mostly gonna come from Foundry Street. You know, eh as opposed to Depot Street. I would imagine most people coming from Depot Street are gonna go through the intersection and take a left turn in from Depot Street, that would be my my guess, just knowing what I know about the intersection as Mickey pointed out. But i- did did your study account for how many additional left turns would be generated by this particular configuration?
Uh yes, this, so we're talking about southbound left turns from Depot Street to Foundry Street. Um we're talking single-digit increases, uh rough roughly magnitude between three and six depending on which specific peak hour. Um so I w- again, our 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 projections were that m- most folks coming from the north. You know, order back, we probably continue to proceed straight through the intersection and come in through the Bay Road. Um the Bay Road exit or entrance, excuse me. Um so again, Mister Chair, I I I hope I was able to answer your question.
No, I that that does, that it, that's right on the nose. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um I'm just gonna, let me see if I can request remote control for a second, if let me do that. Okay, so um if I'm looking at this correctly, I think that the restaurant itself is somewhere around here. Um on where the the vacant house currently sits, sort of a little bit to the E west, I guess this would be. Um the proposed access to the sidewalk would be kind of directly in front of it, so we're looking at right here. Um I'm wondering if you could kind of talk to me a little bit about the 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 logic behind the pedestrian movement on this site. I think the goal for this area of town is really to make it as bicycle and pedestrian friendly as possible in the long term. Um and I have some concerns about pedestrian access coming off of Bay Road. Not that we have a lot of pedestrians or cyclists, but we do sometimes, um and how they would access that site um from this end, especially with that in and out drive-through here, and then also even if there was access here and the currently proposed access here, neither of those really line up with the natural movement of people that we would hope to see at these intersection uh crosswalks here, the crossways. So I'm wondering, yeah, can you just talk a little bit about pedestrian safety in terms of um you know, a future of folks crossing from both roads uh to try and access the Taco Bell?
Sure, um. So so basically, we figured that most of the pedestrian acts uh pedestrian would be traffic would be along Foundry Street. I believe the sidewalk on Bay Road extends just to our property. It does not extend further along Bay Road. So that's why we didn't do a connection here. Uh plus where this is our main driveway, we were trying to get it over towards uh Foundry Street. Um we could run a sidewalk here. But the sidewalk already exists here, so usually we do the the shortest route to the building from the municipal sidewalk, cause I mean, you can say someone's gonna come from this direction, what's the shortest distance from here? Someone's coming from this direction, what's the shortest distance he- here, so we really just try to figure out that what the shortest distance is from a sidewalk, a municipal sidewalk to the store and do that because we can say from all different directions that this is the longest route. So that's what we did, we figured this was the safest route. There is, Stephanie, we did add a sign, a pedestrian sign, but it's not shown on this rendering, I apologize, it was it was added after uh this was submitted, so uh we did add a pedestrian sign here so that it it warns people that are stopped at the drive-through that there is something coming. Uh there is a pedestrian crossing coming, so that's, that was our, our goal is to have it come to the front entrance, cause this is the front entrance of the building, this is the the tower uh that you typically see on the Taco Bells, that front image, going to the front image and and brought it, bring it right towards the building uh main entrance. I hope that answers it.
It does, yeah, and just kind of a follow-up question to that, um. I know that some Taco Bells, um I don't think the ones that are more local do have some outdoor seating space. Um so I was wondering just if you could tell us a little bit about decision-making with regard to that, um whether there is room for some picnic tables or something on that green lawn and or um if there's any accommodation for bicyclists, like one of those circle posts that you can lock your bike onto.
So typically, primarily in New England, we haven't been putting outdoor seating because it's so seasonal. Uh in the warmer climates, we do put in um like patios, perglas, those type of things. Uh in regards to bicycles, we have added bike racks upon request, that's not a problem. But in the northeast, uh it it's like, you know, the gamble when you put a pool and how many months are you gonna get out of it? So we've just found that patios really aren't relevant up here.
Thank you. Kathy, any questions from you?
Uh yeah, I was wondering if you actually had any rendering of what the stockade fence is supposed to look like.
We don't, but it it's usually a typical uh vinyl stockade fence, uh closed panel, so you can't see through it, you know, solid, uh with the, you know, the six feet with the posts and the stockade panels. They're they're pretty typical, I could probably pick up uh give you an image of it.
So is it a vinyl fence?
Would be a vinyl fence for maintenance.
Okay.
Alright. Uh Stephanie, I see uh any other uh thoughts from any board members?
Um I I have a thought, um you are creating a very nice mini park on that corner. What is uh is really nice. And it might not be a good idea or a clever idea, but if you can drop two benches there for people to sit. Uh it might not be, it might make this place a li- a little more inviting. Now you, do you have inside dining on Taco Bell, yes, right?
Yes, there's twenty seats inside.
Okay. I I will, I will suggest you think about it, it's not a condition, it's not that, but it may make that little corner look like a real park. People might sit there.
Alright, uh Bob, we have Mary Landry with her hand raised.
Please, promote her.
Mary, you need to unmute yourself?
Oh, I see it. Hi, everyone, thank you, Mary Landry, fifteen Paquonicate, um. I really like uh all the attention to detail and I really appreciate uh the green space and the thought to pedestrian. I'll offer an observation where as um people crossing that five-corner intersection um at a crosswalk, say if they're coming from the Depot side of things like the gas station side. And if they're crossing the intersection at a crosswalk. Then they have to cross the precarious entrance and exit in order to get to that cross, that pathway that has been designed on the site. Is that, can you get it closer to the crosswalk for the intersection, so then you don't, you know, somebody coming off, you know, Mickey's concern of somebody coming, turning a left from Depot Street, you know, trying to gun through that intersection is you know, offers up that scenario to be a little bit more dangerous as well, whereas you know, somebody coming directly off of a crosswalk can enter onto the site with a lot more safety.
Alright, we could add a sidewalk here. If that's what the board wants, um however, that does have traffic coming in here, traffic from the drive-through, so uh it's kind of the the same um same amount of conflicts.
I just, it's it's not on the road, so it's, you know, crossing a parking lot where the cars are already forced to pay close attention to what they're doing within the driveway. I mean, there is no, obviously, there's no perfect solution, but um getting it closer to the sidewalk makes it a little bit more um clear for for a pedestrian, you know, in their use case, um and how they might. I mean, it's hard to enter, it's hard to cross two driveways and an entrance and an exit. You know, when you're just, it would make things a lot easier and the, you know, the position of the park benches would offer that kind of, you know, close, I assume that's a sign right there on the corner, you know, you can just make that experience a little bit more intentional and thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Landry.
Chair, if I may, I just have a clarifying question. When um the traffic study was conducted, did they look at pedestrian movement as well, or was it just cars and vehicles?
Um thank you for the the question. We we primarily uh concentrated our efforts on the vehicular impact. Uh obviously, um we we sort of leaned on Nicole's effort with regard to um tying into the existing sidewalk system, um I I I believe it was very convenient that there was already existing sidewalk to to tie into. Uh and obviously, there's already an established uh crosswalk system um with full pedestrian actuation at the existing signalized intersection. Um so so it was o- overall considered. Um but but uh the the most realistic, I I think, solutions um are what Nicole has already spoken to, um it we at least providing, providing some formal pedestrian stub into the site. Uh and I think this is actually um one of the few properties, um you know, in in the five corners area where that was directly considered, um at least on on going from memory in my review of the study area when when we were down there. Um so that's, that's all I have on that matter unless Nicole wishes to comment further on that.
So just to go a little bit further on what I said in conflict, so if you're walking down this this side, the sidewalk here. You're dealing with one conflict here, just a car coming in. And then you have a buffer with this island that you can wait and you will have one conflict here. If you have a crosswalk across here, you have the conflict with the car coming in. If you have a crosswalk across here, you have the conflict with the car coming in, a car coming out and possibly a car coming here. So that's uh one, two, three conflicts in this little area where you only have one conflict on each leg of the drive. Driveway, so to me, you know, if walking my kids, I would have, I would prefer going across. A situation where I'm only having to look one way.
I mean, I think that, I think that's fair, I think your point's fair, but I I mean, if you're considering putting. You know, even one park bench over there, I mean, I I can't imagine it would be much of a heavy lift to add. You know, another another walking space to get. Yeah, I mean, cause you know. People are gonna be, people that park there are gonna be, you know, walking through the driveway, I mean, even with kids. So I don't think it's, I don't think Ms. Landry's um ask is is should be too heavy a lift.
And also just to kind of add to that, I think. Plans often assume people walk in a certain way, but the reality of how people walk, you can often see with the natural paths that form through parks. Where the pavements don't align and things like that, I have a sneaking suspicion that there are gonna be folks who would decide to cross. Foundry Street, not at the crosswalk, but actually where that Taco Bell sidewalk is, just to get in there potentially. Um and also to, you know, to ask folks coming off Bay Road or even off the. Eastern side of Depot to come up the road and keep walking all the way just to get to this little sidewalk here, I feel like. I don't know, it's kind of an ask, I feel like you will see people cutting through um that basin at the front to to access the building for sure. From both the streets probably.
Okay, thank you, uh Stephanie, I think we we have. Yeah, we have a couple, we'll have, we'll do a couple more, um then we're probably gonna move on to the next one. Cause I it, we're still waiting for the stormwater. Correct, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna close this tonight, I don't think.
Yeah, we have Marsha Nodelle, who are allowed to talk now, and then Denise Higgins.
Okay, and then we'll probably cut it there.
Okay, thank you very much, Stephanie, um I do have several questions, I am. The trustee for Eastern condominiums, which is the abutting property to the east of the Taco Bell. So if you'll bear with me, um first of all, Stephanie had asked about extending the stockade fence. To give us a little more privacy, I didn't hear a response to that. Okay, um and the sh- the um plantings along there as well. Because as you know, our property sits above. Your property and therefore a six foot fence is not gonna provide us. With total privacy, so if you can have more dense plantings, which I believe is also something Stephanie inquired about.
So, I know there is already a tree line on your side, I we're talking about this side right here, right? So.
There are trees, there are trees, but they're not, the leaves fall off in the fall. I can see from my house all the way to the intersection.
So you're you're more worried about evergreen trees, and that's why I just wanted to ask, you're more worried about evergreen.
Evergreens there, I know you said there were some cedars, but they they don't provide a lot of cover. Let me put it that way, so evergreens would be good along there, something that grows fairly tall. So that we'd have that barrier all year round.
So why don't I get, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I'll get with our landscape architect, um I do not have a green thumb, so. It but that he'll probably recommend white pines or something like that, so we can see what is native that we can.
Some Christmas tree type things, you know, that'll fill in and be good. Alright, and you're gonna do the fence, now I had a question about the parking. Uh it looks like there were thirteen spaces, but some of those, there's a handicap space, there's a couple of spaces for. Pickups. For like Uber and Lyft or the food things that pick up the food and take it away, I don't order that way. So it doesn't leave a lot of spaces, and I'm wondering. How many employees would be working inside at any given shift?
So the reality is less than eight percent of our overall sales are inside.
Yes, but they're cooking.
I'm I'm getting to that. So we have less than maybe two or three customers in the building at any given time, more often than not, there are no customers in the dining room. On average, we have about six to seven employees running a shift.
Okay, and where are they supposed to park? In those spaces?
Yes, so we are re- we're required to have nine spaces per the the town's regulations. However, we did provide thirteen, knowing that we do have those employees. And the mobile pickup lane, uh uh the mobile pickup spots. If there is, if the the lot is full, people are gonna park in those mobile pickup spots.
Or they could park in our parking lot and just run over to your place, but. Um that was one of my concerns, the other thing was. I'm concerned about people cutting through because they don't wanna wait at the light when they're coming. From Bay Road. Toward the intersection, I'm concerned about people just cutting through that parking lot. So they can take a right turn onto Foundry Street. Are you, do you have any ideas like a? Speed bump or something that can be put there to slow them down, because that, to me, I can anticipate that being an issue.
So speed bumps in New England don't mix, unfortunately, um we have never proposed a speed bump. And all of our fast food restaurant sites, um just because they are a maintenance nightmare and get wiped out. Uh we are, this isn't a straight shot too, you do, it is. We made sure that there was a a bend in this, so that it wouldn't go straight through, it does bend in and come out. Is it gonna deter people from doing that? I mean, if they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it, so whether there's a speed bump there or not, they'll do it.
Yes, but well, okay, it just adds to that right turn only on Foundry Street, so. And I'm not gonna beat a dead horse too much more, because people brought up all the traffic stuff. And I understand that we're not adding that many more cars to the mix, but we're. Taking what was a driveway for a two family house where there were three cars. And converting it to a drive through and. So the number of cars coming out of there and with the right turn only, our driveway is right there. So we're not gonna be able to take a left turn ever again. We'll have to go right and cut through other places to get where we have to go, so. Be that as it may, now I have one other question and then I'll be through. The signs, I know at the um zoning board of appeals meeting, there was a discussion about putting signs by that. Foundry Street exit that to direct people and say right turn only. If you're putting signs there, I wanna make sure they're not in our sight line, so that we can. See what's coming from the intersection.
So this, the signs that we propose are all per per MUTCD. Requirements that have a clearing, you have your clearance underneath the signs.
So they're not gonna interfere when we're in a car trying to see down the road?
No, they should not, cause they're higher.
I thought it would be lower to that exit, I I mean, I I don't know what MUTD is, so.
Federal regulations for traffic signs.
Okay, Bob, I'm going to promote um allow Denise to speak.
Thank you, thank Ms. Nodelle.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can, the floor is yours.
So um I had exactly the same comment as the previous.
Uh Ms. Higgins, you know, you know the rules, state your name and your address.
Denise Higgins for New Pondway. I I am going to reiterate, even though it was just said before. And I think that the board members and people that frequent Easton know exactly what I'm talking about. Um we have become very patterned in this town, especially people that use this this specific intersection. Um you know, going into Dollar Store on Depot Street, avoiding that corner, heading out to Foundry Street. Or going uh Foundry Street into Shaw's to get to Depot Street, we've all created shortcuts. I. I can see it, quite frankly, being a cut through to avoid the the light in the intersection. Um maybe a bump is not reasonable in New England. But maybe um cobbles or maybe an indi- indifferent uh street pattern might. Might be something that you might consider, um my biggest concern with this is really the 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 traffic and the potential. Uh movement in that intersection. My second comment is the front of the building. Um where it has the two entrance entrances or the entrance and the, yeah, the two. Uh flow of traffic. When you are driving from Shaw's direction towards Mansfield. Will there be an opportunity for someone to take a turn going into the complex? Am I making myself clear about where that would be?
Yeah, I think I think this was the question that that Mickey and I were talking about earlier. And um I don't wanna put words in Mr. Ballinger's mouth, but it sounded to me like. There would only be potentially an increase in the single di- digits per day. In those left hand turns associated with Taco Bell. Negligible, Mr. Ballinger, but please correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh no, no, um thank you, Mr. Chair again, Bob Ballinger, uh Greenman Peterson. Uh at the southbound left turn, um from uh Depot to Foundry. During the peak hour periods, you're only talking about single, single digit increases. Um so um I I I guess I'm I'm sort of just reaffirming what you stated, Mr. Chairman. I I I don't have anything else to add unless there's there's a follow up question.
So can I take a stab at that being a little bit more clear? Um the front of the building, where I'm looking at your picture right now, where it says Foundry Street Route one oh six. That, yes, exactly, that where the pointer is. I'm very concerned that if I were coming from from Shaw's. Going into the five corners intersection, heading towards Mansfield. I'm just trying to make myself clear the direction, and someone wanted to go into that. Facility and into, is there anything that restricts that car from making that turn in? Exactly, right there, so I believe you're talking about a left turn in and from Foundry Street, correct?
Alright, so you're talking about an exit more towards. Uh uh an exit from Shaw's on Foundry Street as opposed to from Depot Street? I see, okay.
No, being in Foundry Street, turning in.
Right, a left turn from Foundry Street, right. It's prohibited.
Turn from fa- from Foundry into that entrance that is there with the arrow.
Right.
Instead of.
And though it may be prohibited, there's gonna be someone who's gonna, who's gonna take the opportunity to, or it's gonna be confusing. Um and and the more confusing that it is, the more prime for accident, that's my concern. Otherwise, it looks like almost all the traffic should be coming in from Bay Road. Because. Uh uh e- except of course, that small turn when someone is on Foundry Street, coming from the Mansfield direction to Shaw's, that one's a make sense.
So there is one that I'm concerned about is that one, right there, exactly. So there's exit, so there is, there is an island between the right in, right out. To to prevent those left turns coming in. So by giving this a slant and pro- and providing a landscaped island between those. It encourages the right in, right out movement.
Ni- Nicole, as Murphy's Law say, if if can happen, it will.
Exactly, that's my concern.
Though, yeah, if it if it happen, it will, so. I don't know how you prevent some people from doing that, uh besides. There is no sign, no nothing that tells you not to do it, by the way.
There is, um on our site plan, we do show, it's just not shown on the, well, actually it is, there's um. Go to our site plan.
Well, if there is, if there is a sign, do not enter.
There's do not enter here.
No.
So these are all our signs here. So there's do not enter here.
Yeah, not enter there for sure, but you need and not enter on the other side for people coming on Foundry.
So that would, that would confuse traffic if we put a do not enter, because then. People can't enter this way.
What I meant, you don't have and you cannot have. A sign that says do not enter from the right there, from Foundry, by turning left.
Um if if I'm on the speaker at this point, is there any way to mark the asphalt ground with directional arrows?
Um it's a state uh highway, so.
It's just town.
On their, on their property, they can put those arrows.
Yeah, but at that point, you're already in the driveway, there, we cannot mark the town, uh this is town jurisdiction, even though it's a. Route one oh six, this is within town jurisdiction, so having a right turn arrow here does not work. The only way to to do this is to slant the driveway the way that we have and putting a pork chop island in the middle. Um we can't put, like I said, we can't put arrows within the town right away here, cause that would confuse people. And do not enter signs, we can't put on there because that would eliminate all of our right interns there and cause more confusion.
Where the arrows are depicted on this, uh is that possible to to paint them on the asphalt?
Yeah, these, that's, if that's your personal property and not the road space.
Yes, within our property, we will have those arrows.
Yeah, I would encourage that, because that gives a little bit more definition to um to to, because I've seen. I I mean, five corners is crazy as all get out, and I'm I'm gonna tell you all the shortcuts that they're taking, I can tell you everyone I've taken, I can tell you that. There's gonna be a whole lot more creativity here at this intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, so um. Stephanie, when do we expect the stormwater report back?
I think by our next meeting, which is. Uh let's see, August twelfth.
Okay, and you know, if I'm hearing some of the the feedback, it sounds like. Sounds like the team was a yes to stockade fence, uh we're gonna look into some additional. Uh plantings, including potentially some evergreens. Um you know, some some benches, bike racks. Uh pedestrian crossing sign, although it sounds like you guys may have added that already, it just didn't get uploaded to the system. Um you were gonna add the uh fixtures, you know, the downward casting, dark sky compliant. Stephanie, was there anything that I was missing or board members, anything that we'd like to see on on the plans before? They come back to us?
I think you could, it's all.
Okay, um do you, do you guys, do you think you'll be ready by the next meeting on August twelfth?
We should be.
Okay, I will uh accept a motion to continue then.
Motion to continue to uh August twelve, Kevin.
Second wolf.
Any further discussion, hearing and seeing none, Wolf? Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. We'll see you guys in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Nicole, if you could stop sharing your screen?
Alright, next up, we have a site plan review also. For two fifty Foundry Street, Southeastern Regional School District.
And we have Scott Nelson joining us and Scott, if there is anyone else from. Okay, we have Carl Franceschi.
Welcome.
Good evening, folks. I'm Carl Franceschi. I'm a principal with DRA Architects on behalf of the school district, Southeastern Regional.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, may I share my screen?
Please do, and if, uh, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Nelson's gonna be presenting with you, but if so, if he could just uh state his name as well.
Hello, everyone. I don't know if Scott is on yet, but, um, Mike, you're listening with the OPM, PCA three sixty.
Welcome. Okay, Mr. Franceschi, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, um. Uh, this Southeastern Regional School was is proposing to expand their existing uh building. Slightly based on a a grant they've received from the state to create what they call a STEM center. STEM is S T E M, science, technology, engineering, math. Um, it's an addition that will allow um collaboration among some existing programs. It's not built to expand the school, really, it's just to give them an additional uh resource. Um, here's the aerial photo, for those who are familiar, Foundry Street is at the top of the page. Um, the addition, let me see if I can go to the next. Um, the addition has proposed this small L-shaped um yellow area back here in the back corner. Uh, adjacent to the existing building. In in essence, it's being proposed to be built on what is now a driveway. Um, and in a um small area between the fenced-in softball field here, which will remain. Um, and the existing school here. Um, it's a one-story building, it will match the the height of the existing school back here on on both sides. Um, fairly modest, straightforward plan. I could uh zoom in on this one a little bit perhaps. Um. And then just looking at it, here, here it is highlighted, um, so the existing school. Um, and the proposed addition, it it's basically one, one room wide, twenty-four feet wide here being added and then it. It bumps out a a bit here at the inside corner. Um, and that existing softball field uh remains here, it's about. What what is now a driveway will in essence become a walkway. Um, and there's an alternative uh path around the school. Um, so currently, there was a drive that went all the way around the school, kind of in that. S-shaped fashion, now that drive goes around this way. Um, but this, there will still be a driveway along this side, there'll still be a driveway up to this side. It's just that this piece of the driveway will be reduced in width to essentially a sidewalk. Uh, between the new addition and the the existing fence of the softball field. So, um, as we said, the he- here's sort of a reverse view of the way we've oriented the the plan. Um, here, you can see a little closer, um, the the proposed addition. Uh, which is extending um some spaces off the existing school and providing that kind of collaboration space. Um, between a a few adjacent programs here. Um, in terms of the view, it's a very modest, straightforward building. It it's actually kind of a unique, um. Uh, procurement process in that because it's a vocational school and the the school has construction, um. Uh, students as well. Um, the 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 district is hiring a contractor in essence to build the shell of the building. And then the students and their instructors will finish it off in the next academic year, so, um. Uh, what you're seeing here, this is the the long elevation of the building, it's essentially a. Uh, one-story insulated metal panel, uh, building on a steel frame. Uh, with a flat roof and here's the the short elevation of it that matches up with the the elevation of the existing building. Um, there, so the contractor will be building in essence the shell of the building, it'll be weather tight. When when they're finished and then the the school will finish it off inside. There's, there's not much to finish off, frankly, it's it's a lot of open space, but putting the lights in, the finished ductwork and. Some of the the controls and a couple doorways and walls um out of metal stud and drywall that the the school can construct. So, um, it's both, as I say, sort of a educational uh program for the school as well as an additional. Um, resource. Um, so that's essentially it, it's being built on, uh, going back to the to the aerial, as we said, it it's a paved. Um, for the most part now, there's a tiny little bit of grass there. Um, but it's sort of de minimis change in the amount of impervious material, so. In essence, the new roof drains will tie into the existing drainage the same way the. The existing stormwater is handled by the the manholes um on site there as well, so there's very little change to the. To the site condition. As we say, there there's no real expansion of the student enrollment. Um, or the or the faculty enrollment, so no additional parking is proposed a- as part of this project. Um, we should mention, there is a, under this softball field, there is a leaching field. Um, it's serviced by some tanks back here at this. Um, if you can see my pointer at this inside corner that distribute um to the leaching field. Um, under the softball field, we're not imposing on that or impacting that in in any way. Um, the the building itself is over two hundred and fifty feet away from those tanks. The the building here is is about fifty feet away from from the field itself. Uh, as well, where there's a, there's a manhole out here or a vent pipe. Um, as as best we can tell, so we're not impacting that and, um, and we're not really adding any plumbing either indoors. This is basically open space here, open classroom space. Um, no, no additional toilet rooms or or plumbing is is provided and no increase, as we say, in either student or faculty. Uh, population, so fairly straightforward, modest project. But we appreciate your review and we're available to answer your questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation, um. Uh, can I ask, wha- what is the that right-of-way kind of used for now, the the vehicle path? Is it mostly for drop-offs to like the football field and then to the to the softball field? I mean.
Um, Scott Nelson is on.
No, it's. Hi, Scott Nelson, facilities engineer at Southeastern Regional. Um, it's just an access road, we do more uh deliveries to the back of the shops. That are over on that corner. Where Carla's marking right there, so they'll just enter from the other direction.
Mm-hmm. And it's always been just a. Here, but there are overhead doors into these shops along this face, so this driveway here serves those. Um, it really was sort of just a matter of convenience to drive around the building um in in that pattern. Um, but now that, if if traffic wants to go around the building, there is an alternative path being provided.
Well, so are you saying that there there is access required in the, are there bays in the back?
There there are a few overhead doors here along, and that that they will continue to be accessible in the proposed plan. In the proposed plan, you can see we don't block those doors, so that those shops still will have access for deliveries.
Okay, um, so how will they, I mean, how often, how frequently are they used?
Once a month.
Okay, um, and that's not, I mean, the cafeteria is not back there, right? There's food deliveries are in the back, okay.
No, no, that's all out front.
The main deliveries are here, in this loading area here.
Okay.
Query is in the center of the building, yeah.
Yeah, that's just steel goods going into the welding and precision machining shop.
It's more like once a semester generally for major deliveries at the beginning of school, yeah.
Correct.
Alright, uh, that's all I have, Stephanie.
Uh, because I raised the question about that area, that was, I mean, I, again, I think it's a fairly straightforward project. The impervious surface is over a substantially already paved area and they are infiltrating. Into the existing system, but my question is, now that you've zoomed in, it actually looks a little. More realistic, so the delivery vehicles that will be coming in will actually be able to back out.
They they can, they can, um, sort of do a T-turn here.
Right, what is the side, I mean, are these tractor trailers or like box?
No. Uh, no, this is Scott again, no, they're they're just straight jobs.
Or box trucks, yeah.
Yeah, box trucks or or a straight job, Stephanie, uh, flatbed.
Yep. Okay, I have no other comments, Bob, thank you.
Uh, I I have a question related to that, fire trucks needs to get to this area, is it okay for the fire department?
Yes, so it's, this is Scott again, um, before we started planning this, I had asked the fire department to come down. And John DeZalo, who was the safety um officer at the time, they actually came down with a fire truck. To drive through to make sure everything was smooth and we actually had a, uh, we had a call today. Um, that they had, they came around the building and they took the back road right out and it worked perfect. They like it better than doing the zigzag.
Popping around, you're saying? As it goes, I see.
Right, right here, yeah.
Going right around there, I see.
Yep.
And connecting here.
Okay. Other board members? Seeing no other questions, I will, uh, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the site plan as presented, Kevin.
Zigman, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Weeks?
Aye, yes.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Good luck on the project.
Uh, thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Greatly appreciated. Bye-bye.
Okay, uh, relatively short meeting today, uh, we are on to meeting minutes from July fifteenth. I took a quick spin through them earlier, they looked okay to me.
Okay to me, though.
Motion to approve the minutes from July fifteenth, Wolf?
Kevin, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Weeks?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Uh, Stephanie, uh, no, no chair updates this week, any planning director updates?
No.
No.
Alright, well, that's a short meeting, uh, next meeting, of course, will be August twelfth. Uh, I will entertain a motion. Alright, uh, Weeks, uh, excuse me, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Weeks?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Kedham?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Thank you all and thank you to Easton. Have a great night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, everyone.